I have to call a meeting to order at 7:05 on January 13th. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a fight of the United States of America and as we develop the forces of saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call, Mr. Lego?
First man, President. Go get back here.
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize you weren't next to me.
Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Chassett.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
President.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusy.
Here.
Mr. Stobart.
Here.
And Dr. Trey is out of town. You have a form now, President.
Thank you. Dr. Trey wanted everybody to know that he is in Florida enjoying the beach, but that he will be watching the video of this meeting tomorrow so that he will be piping in with his opinions after listening to all of your opinions. Well, he said after his beach day tomorrow. I also want to announce that prior to this meeting, we've had an executive session and we discussed the, actually, the agenda tonight and the order of the meeting, and we also discussed some personnel matters and labor negotiations. Okay. All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Question.
Okay. Motion by Phil.
Second by Nick.
Second by Nick that the minutes, the organization, regular meeting held on December 3rd, 2013 be approved as present. Here's Andy Rutherford. Question?
Question was called.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Now, turn it over to Dr. Harris for the information section.
Thank you, Mrs. Issing. First, I want to start off by introducing our student union president, Lucas Johnson.
Actually, School Board recognition.
Oh, that was close. Not really.
Well, hello, everyone. Good, my name is Lucas, so if you have not met me. First, I want to discuss the typhoon relief. Student Union had a donation collected at lunches for typhoon relief last month. Students went table to table asking for donations possible and were able to come up with $500 to send a red cross. Student Union has made a goal this year to fundraise as much as possible, and we surely have. We've reached out to Wounded Warriors, Veterans Outreach, JDRF, and American Heart Association. Soon to come, Juliana Diabetes Foundation. Sadie's Hopkins was an overall success. There were about 70 students that showed up to the dance in comparison to last year's winter ball that had to be canceled. The DJ played great music and students had a great time. The prompt committee will be hosting a surprise activity on February 28th, 2014. It will be announced to the students sometime this January. The JDRF fundraiser, the school-wide event hosted by Student Union and sponsored by Word Cash Dash will be on January 17th after school at the high school. The event was featured, will be featured as a school-wide pillow fight which has, was chosen by Student Union in late November. The admission ticket to the pillow fight is a $5 Penn Trafford lanyard, and all profits will be donated to JDRF, which was chosen by Student Union as well. All school policies, including dress code, will be enforced. There's also rules in place regarding pillows so that students do not get injured. The community action program will continue their monthly assistance to the elementary schools by working market days and babysitting at their PTO meetings. Also, members will be attending the second Sunday supper soup kitchen in Greensburg, working in Westmoreland County Food Bank.
Any questions or comments?
Lucas, can I add, talk about the alumni in the Arts Day and the 3180 alumni?
We had, right before Christmas, we had a lot of our alumni show for the high school to come back and visit. We had two groups, the 3180 kids came back to graduates to meet with existing kids that are here and talk about their successes and the things that they've encountered as they've moved on in life, and talk about the importance of school and doing well and all the different things that they've done here and how it helped them succeed in the future. So, it was a great program. Mrs. Harris, the teacher in this days, put that on along with the kids that were in that program. And we also had Alumni in the Arts Day, which essentially brings back all of the graduates over the last 10, 15 years that have been a part of our art program. And they, it's like a career and workplace program where the kids are talking about the things that they're doing. We had discussions from the kids who were in art in the areas of marketing and kids who set up their own businesses in the arts, graphic designers, all kinds of different art fields, and they showcased their talents here. The alumni came in and even kids who are still in college talking about the things that they were involved with. So, it was just a great opportunity for our alumni to see the connections of what we do here and how it connects to what happens outside in the workplace. So, Mrs. Havered did a great job of doing that along with all of her kids to bring that program on, so I just wanted to mention that.
I attended the Alumni in the Arts Day. It was very impressive. It was really neat to talk to some of the other graduates, I mean, some of the graduates from PT to see what they were doing. You'd say 10 to 15, there was a guy there, he graduated, he was older than I was. He graduated in the early 70s.
Yeah.
And he was so excited to be here. And afterwards, I actually contacted Matt, and I said, "You know what we need to do? We need to do a Alumni in Science Day," or a Women in Science Day from PT. You know, inspire people to go into the arts or into sciences.
It was nice.
It was neat.
Just showed the kids there are many opportunities and jobs out there in the field of art. It just, it was good. It was a great, great experience for everybody.
All right, thank you, Lucas. I also wanted to remind everyone about the foundation event on this Saturday at the high school at 6:30. It would be an amazing night, it's PT Got Talent. For two years in a row, we did Dancing with Teachers, and after the second year, we decided to postpone it for one year, and we were coming back with PT Got Talent. We have acts from the elementary schools, the middle schools, the high schools. A lot of our teachers are going to be doing an act in the second half of the show. It's going to be a great night. We're hoping to raise a lot of money. All the money comes back to Penn Trafford schools, the teachers write grants for things they would like in the classroom supplies. It's a great opportunity. Just warning, get your tickets ahead of time. When we had Dancing, we almost sold out of tickets that night. It was amazing. So, I appreciate all the students and the teachers who worked so hard along with our foundation members. On Saturday, January 11th, the PT cheerleaders participated in their first ripple competitive spirit competition. The girls competed in the big school level and finished fifth. The top four teams advanced to the PIAA championships. The team was made the first alternative, however, today they were invited for a spot in Hershey. So, congratulations on the job well done by our girls and the coaching staff. So, it was very impressive, their first attempt down.
Okay. How about the kids?
This was a very impressive, and now we also want to recognize another impressive group, as it is School Board Recognition Night tonight. I want to thank each member of the School Board for another year of service and for volunteering their times and talents for the betterment of public education in our community. Every year, the Pennsylvania School Board Association sends us a canned thing to read. Then I read the information, and I said, "It doesn't really apply to our School Board because it talks a lot about policies and procedures and words." It really left off this year, I felt, which was what our first priority always is, is the kids. And our School Board, everything we actually do is, is, "Well, how does this benefit children?" And that's one thing I really appreciate. So, instead of reading what they have, I have, just want to take a moment to let you know that School Board does take pride in the children. They do encourage us to provide new innovative programs, technology improvements, professional developments for teachers, more opportunities for students, academics, social, and extracurricular experiences. By providing the support, we were able to earn, the last seven years or every single year the Keystone Program was in place, every single one of our schools, every single one of our categories earned a Keystone. And during that whole time, we were very budget conscious. We always made sure we were fiscal responsibility. We haven't raised taxes for the last two school years, so we made a lot of gains, fiscally responsible, but it was always for kids. And I think that goes along a lot more than, not that I want to criticize what they wrote for you, but I actually thought it was more meaningful because we are kid-centered at PT. Nick, you're starting your 35th year as a School Board member.
I don't tell anybody.
For this 35 years, real quick, what's your best moment or your best accomplishment?
Academics and finances.
Academics and finances?
Yeah. Facilities still work in progress.
Marty, this is yours, is this your second and a half?
My second one.
Second one?
I, my, a lot less experience than Nick sitting here, but my best experience is each month when we have the Students of the Month. To me, that is the culmination of all the work we do when we see these kids stand up, and each one of the principals just reads this laundry list of incredible things, and all diverse kids. We had kids from low tech, we had kids with special needs, we had kids all over the map, all special performers within the district. So, to me, that strikes that things are moving in the right direction.
Appreciate hearing that. Does anyone else want to come up with something, or you only, I know everyone's already saying, please move on for time, especially with a nice, nice size audience. All right, in front of you, you do have a certificate from the Pennsylvania School Board Association recognizing you for the upcoming school year. I'm sure you'll take that and hang it someplace proudly, maybe on the refrigerator. And after we do the Student of the Month photos tonight, we will have School Board photos too as well. So, I do appreciate everything you do, so thank you for all your times and talents. And as Marty mentioned, at the best time of night, and this is always our favorite moment, is for the Student of the Month recognition. So, we are going to start off with Karen Corner from Sunrise.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'm going to ask Mallory Anderson to come on up here. Okay, Sunrise would like to congratulate Elementary Student of the Month for January, Miss Mallory Anderson. Mallory is the almost 11-year-old, as her birthday is next week, daughter of Richard and Lee Anderson. She is currently a fifth grader at Sunrise. Mallory has one younger sister, Lydia, who is also behind me. She is in third grade at Sunrise, and a younger brother, Owen, who is four. We are so proud to have Mallory in our school and our district. She is a bright spot in everyone's day and a joy to have in class. When I asked Mallory's teachers to describe her, they stated that Mallory is typically the leader of the group and works well with others. She does extremely well academically and outperforms most of her peers. She is an active participant in all of her classes and gets along well with everyone. She makes friends easily and has a very sweet personality. Mallory's homeroom teacher, Mrs. Lubeki, who is also here, stated that Mallory just moved into our school district recently, and she transitioned without any difficulties. She is an all-around great kid and goes above and beyond every day. When speaking with Mallory, she told me that she likes to dance jazz and do tumbling at Donna's School of Dance. I found out from her parents that she is in her seventh year of dance lessons and was in a competitive dance team when she lived in West Virginia. Mallory loves to read books, she plays on the computer, especially YouTube, and loves to watch TV. Mallory loves school because it is so big and has so many computers. She told me, "The teachers are really nice here." Mallory also told me that she wants to build robots in the future because she really loves computers and wants to use them later in her life. Mallory likes all her subjects, but her favorite subject is science, and she enjoys playing with her dog, which is a miniature poodle. I also spoke with Mallory's sister, Lydia, and she gave me some thoughts about her sister. When I asked Lydia to describe her, she said, "She has good advice and she is really nice. She is always doing secret nice things for me and my brother." Lydia also told me that her sister likes to play a game with her called Pop Tropica on the computer, and they play American Girl dolls together. I finally spoke with Mallory's mother and father, and they told me that, and these are some quotes from her parents, "They are very pleased with how Mallory has acclimated to Sunrise. Just five months in, Mallory is doing fine with her classes, she's made new friends, and she really likes her school and her teachers. When we visited with family and friends over the Christmas break, she proudly wore her Penn Trafford hoodie that we purchased at one of the PTO fundraisers this fall. Her parents mentioned that Mallory enjoys classes that incorporate technology into the learning experience. In fact, she likes PowerPoint so much that sometimes on the weekends, she makes her own PowerPoint presentations about topics that interest her, like frogs or robots. One weekend when her grandparents were visiting from West Virginia, Mallory and her grandfather made a very elaborate PowerPoint on how to build a house. Her grandfather is a Habitat for Humanity volunteer. She didn't know anything about building houses, and he didn't know anything about PowerPoint, but they sat at the computer for a couple of hours and made a nice presentation. She couldn't have done that a few months ago. Her parents mentioned to me how gratifying it is to see her take a new skill that she has learned in school and apply it to an activity that let her and her grandfather connect in a fun way. Mallory's parents also mentioned that she likes the snow that we get here in the wintertime because she likes to sled and ice skate. Her parents feel that Mallory is happy at Sunrise, and they are grateful for the educational experience that she is getting here. They feel like, quote, "Penn Trafford will empower her success in the future, not limit it, and that's a great feeling to have," end quote. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Miss Mallory Anderson as the Elementary January Student of the Month. Congrats.
I need her back to the room. Come on back, Mallory. This is my first month doing this, so, and this is your first time, so, we'll both learn. How's that? Well, first of all, what a great welcome to Penn Trafford. You're off to a wonderful start.
Thank you.
We're glad to have students like you here. Where are you from in West Virginia?
San Antonio.
Where's that, you know?
San Antonio.
Oh, okay, so you're kind of a distance, huh?
Mm-hmm.
I always get excited to hear about young girls who are interested in computers and science, because that's what I studied in college. So, good luck, it was a great career.
Thank you.
We have Jim Simpson, Principal of Penn Middle, to honor his Student of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Wyatt, could you come on up?
Thank you.
The January Penn Middle School Student of the Month is eighth grader Wyatt Schramm. He is the son of John and Kerry Schramm of Harrison City and has three brothers. Zach, a junior at Westminster, Tyler, a senior here at Penn Trafford, and Sawyer, a sixth grader at Penn Middle School. All the boys are close, and sometimes would rather spend time doing things together than with friends, I learned during my interviews. Sawyer, his younger brother, says they play a lot of the video games together, along with big brother Tyler, and Wyatt is much more outgoing at home than he is at school. He paused for a second, his younger brother Sawyer paused for a second. Where's Sawyer at? Raise your hand, Sawyer. Sawyer paused for a second, and he said, "He's my big brother, but he's also my friend." I thought that was, it was a really nice thing to say about your big brother, because I've seen siblings who don't get along so well. Tyler, his older brother, the senior, says he plays video games and they hang out together, and he went on to say, "But Wyatt deserves this because he's such a hard worker and a good person." Zach, I'm sorry, I couldn't come up to, is Zach here? No, I couldn't get to Westminster. Dr. Harrison wanted to let me go on a date trip. Wyatt, he's a very humble young man, and he deflects praise. I'm sure he's a little bit embarrassed right now just talking to him, but he, he's well deserved. When I spoke to him, one of the first things he said, "Well, there's a lot of other people who deserve this award, Mr. Simpson." That was one of the first things out of his mouth, and that's the kind of character he, he has, and we're proud he's at Penn Middle School. Mom and dad share that Wyatt is a very quiet young man, but he has a great sense of humor, very witty and full of one-liners. He always has everyone in the house laughing. He loves to read books and can read an entire book in two to three days. I don't know, I, two to three days, I, it'd take me two to three weeks to get through a comment. He likes to watch TV, and he likes to watch TV shows about science and history. He listens to music, but country is his favorite. We were going to listen to some Ricky Van Shelton today, but we couldn't, didn't have time. Wyatt played soccer for Penn Trafford Soccer Club for seven years. Some reasons, some seasons he was on two teams. He's wrestled for the Penn Trafford Wrestling Club for two seasons and won many tournaments. Currently, he's playing deck hockey at the Murresville Deck Arena and plays all possessions, but he likes to play defense the best. Wyatt loves to work with his dad at the farm, but mostly loves to watch his bank account grow. That's good. He's a very hard worker and takes responsibilities very seriously. He helps cook dinner, especially on waffle night, is a huge help doing laundry, things we learn here. Talking to his teachers, every teacher, from the gym teacher to the algebra teacher, discuss selflessness and work ethic with Wyatt. That's the thing they could say, where, and the examples where when they're in a group and they're in a team, you know, you always have a different dynamic when kids are working together, and Wyatt is the type of man, boy that will stand up and take the lead, or he'll sit back and let somebody else do it. He's a very selfish young man. And another teacher goes on to say that Wyatt displays the type of integrity that all students should have. He's very conscientious to help other students. The other day, a young lady, a sixth grader, dropped all of her belongings in the hall. As students continue to move around her without helping, Wyatt stopped, helped pick up her things, making sure she was okay. He's one of those students that makes sure rules get followed, goes about his business, is very quiet, but very much deserves this recognition. I talked about Wyatt, talked about Wyatt in his future, and he would like to become an architect. With his hard work and integrity, there's no reason he cannot fulfill this dream. I'm very proud to be the principal of Wyatt Schramm, eighth grader at Penn Middle School.
Congratulations, Wyatt. And, there you go. You know, coming from a family of four, I can tell you it's not always easy for everybody to get along, so I commend you and your siblings for everybody getting along, and commend your parents, it's important. But also, I wanted to comment, you know, you're well on your way to being successful in life. Selflessness, work ethic, these are the keys. I mean, these are the keys that make you a good employee and a good leader. So, congratulations. I look forward to hearing more about your, down the road.
Thank you.
And last, we have Scott Engleis, the high school principal, for student of the Month.
Cameron, how you doing? Come on up. I have Cameron Breeze, he's a senior at the high school. I know Cameron's here with his mom and dad, William and Deanna Breeze, and I know he has a brother, Kayden, and Kayden's in ninth grade at the high school, and he has a sister, Cassandra, she's in seventh grade at Penn Middle School. But I remember, I go back to Cameron, some of my first experiences with her, I think he was in somewhere between ninth and 10th grade, and I met with him and his mother. He wanted to know how the heck he could get through our curriculum and get to it as fast as he can and is, is, you know, he wanted to fly through it, especially in the math and sciences, he's, that, that's his specialty. And we really rearranged things and tried to work things out so that he's able to get a lot of courses early and get things done so that he can get all of the advanced courses that he wanted on his plate by the time he was a senior. And I think we pretty much accommodated most of those issues that you had, so he's done very, very well. And really, the primary reason why he is here today is because Cameron was, we haven't had too many kids that have ever done this, but he has been selected to attend the prestigious Pennsylvania Governor's School for the Sciences at Carnegie Mellon University this summer. And it's, it's a real honor to do that. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what that program is, just in case if you're not familiar with it. But the Pennsylvania Governor's School is a rigorous five-week program which provides talented Pennsylvania rising high school seniors with enrichment experiences in the sciences and mathematics, and encourages them to pursue careers in science and technology. Only 60 students statewide were accepted into this year's program among 515 applicants. Students accepted into the Governor's School for the Sciences are among the top achievers at their high schools. While attending the Governor's School, all students live on campus in a Carnegie Mellon dormitory and take specially-designed lecture courses in biology, chemistry, computer science, mathematics, and physics. In addition, students participate in laboratory courses at their own choosing and engage in team research projects. They also have opportunities to take elective courses, participate in field trips, attend special lectures and seminars, and interact with university faculty. So, that's quite an accomplishment to be a part of that, that process, and I wish you well, and I think it'll be a great experience for you. I know that that's something that is right up your alley in terms of math and sciences, and I'm sure it will serve you well. But in addition to all that, he's a great kid. It's an honor and privilege to have a kid like Cameron in the school. He's involved in International Art Society, he's been involved with the Toys for Tots program that Dr. Trey has initiated here. He's on our quiz team, he's played soccer for four years, and you know, to balance the athletics and academics like that is not an easy thing. He also officiates at the Penn Township Rec Soccer Program. He's officiated my kids many times, I think most of the calls were pretty good, but there's a couple that I can complain about. Overall, I can't complain. He enjoys, some of his hobbies, he does enjoy reading, writing, and the visual arts, and it's, I was surprised at that, because this is a math-science guy, but he really likes the reading and the writing. And he said to me, you know, "I like the, you know, this literature stuff that you guys teach in school, it's all right, but I like to expand on that a little bit more, you know, the limitations that you set in the school, I like to go above and beyond." So, it was kind of neat that he, you know, we can't offer all the readings that we'd like to in school because we're a school, but he likes to extend the limits and do, and move beyond that, and that shows his, you know, his passion and commitment to moving and taking risks and moving on. So, I thought that was neat. Cameron's ranked second in his class, he has a 4.55 GPA. He's been accepted already to Pitt in Ohio State. He's still waiting to hear from Carnegie Mellon in Columbia. He'd like to go to Columbia University, but he's keeping an open mind in regard to his major, but it will probably be in the biology, biochemistry, chemistry, or something related to medicine. Very proud to have Cameron Breeze as our high school student of the month. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations, Cameron. Job well done, and I'm sure Governor's School must have been a fantastic experience.
Wonderful experience, thank you.
Kind of give you a little bit of taste of college life.
Yes.
What to look forward to.
The food isn't very good.
Welcome to college life, okay? Think Pitt.
We're going to take a minute to have a photo with the press on our Students of the Month. So, the students can gather up on the right side of the room. Right after the students, we're going to take a brief moment to have the School Board members to have a photo as well. If the Students of the Month and kids come over and bring their certificates. I guess Scott has managed to set up, but what I would just provide information on the building, last week, we had a gentleman from the band, he came, he was a band parent, Mr. Satter, very concerned about the different size of the renovation project and the amount of space that the band could be losing in the renovation. We have a few minutes, just some of the audience members are congratulating some students, but we're leaving. But to follow up with what the gentleman was saying, we was talking about the different space, they were worried about the band losing space in the new project. We did meet with the architect this week, we did meet with Mr. Fornelius today. We went over some new drawings, new information, some ideas. I'm going to have Hank, our architect, kind of tell you what's going on in this meeting and how we left things today.
So, we're continuing to meet with not just the band department, but with all departments, and we're continuing to fine-tune the drawings. Each time we have a meeting with a different group, we go back and we fine-tune what they've put into it, and the drawings are really coming together and really starting to finalize the design portion of the project and move forward. Like you said, we met with the band department again today, and I believe we're, we're very close with them, that this last round, they, they agreed with a lot of the, with just about everything that we had done and thought that it would work well with, with what they're moving forward with. And all departments are working towards that. We still have another meeting with science and some other things, but we're, we're winding down with that.
I personally did ask Mr. Fornelius at the end of the meeting, are there any other suggestions from you, even not at this time, that everything that we was working on and how we were providing some additional space, he was happy with. Next, the reason we're doing a presentation tonight, when the district opens to bids, now that we have the project that's going to go off a bid, once the bids come back in April, there is a chance we might have a 5% to 10% money left over. When we actually go off a bid, we put the prices there, and we always, like anything you do, when you do a bid at your own house for projects, you always hope it comes in less money than what you expect for. Or in this case, if it does come back 5% to 10%, it's not like at home where we save a couple hundred, we're talking at 1.6 to 3.2 million dollars. So, using that amount, we need to come up with a plan now, because when the bids come open, we don't want to waste three more months deciding how we're going to spend the additional funds. Because it is our recommendation that as soon as it comes in April, we want to have our plan in place, so we can actually start the project as soon as the school year ends. Dan, our project, Tim Keever, he just came from the Sarah, do you have any, any more information about that process or about the bid?
Our recommendation is the board would have a prioritized list. We know the approximate values of the alternates. You can pick them in any order you want. You don't have to pick 1, 2, 3, you can pick 1, 7, 9, you know, however, I think it would be our recommendation that the, the board I think it would be our recommendation that the board has a prioritized list, doesn't have to be anything official, so that when the bids are open and we have two to three days in the schedule while we're vetting the apparent lows, when we're reviewing their bids and making sure that they have everything, that the board then takes that time to be able to, you know, disseminate to us, you know, what the alternates are that they want. The quicksand is that one alternate selection could change who the low bidder is. So you could have, say, contractor A, contractor B. Contractor A is low base bid, the contractor B with add alternate 3 then becomes the low bidder, because of the values. So that's where it gets a little bit confusing. But it would be nice, at the time of the bid, to have a prioritized list so that we could then see what the dealt, you know, what money is left over, and then, you know, go from there.
Currently, that's what the school board is working on. Tonight, Mr. Ingles is actually gonna go over some of our alternatives and where the board feels if we do have money left over. And right now, remember the key word is "if," because we don't know exactly how much we have left over. You're always hoping for a larger amount in the 5% to 10%. Actually, we're hoping that if we don't, have the other problem where it comes in the other way. So right now, let's just hope for the 5% to 10%. And we're trying to work through the next couple of months so we know exactly what we're gonna do come bid open. Mr. Ingles?
When you came in, you probably saw, there's about six or seven or eight drawings over on the tables over there, and half the drawings represent what we call the base bid, and the base bid represents what we can do for the project up to that $32 million mark. And Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think where the estimate right now for the base bid is about $31.4, $4.5 million, right? So we're about a half a million dollars under the $32 million threshold right now.
And that includes all your soft costs?
Yes.
That includes all the money? That is necessary for the school district to spend in order to execute this project. The actual sticks and bricks number is in the 26, 27 million dollar range. So the cost of the actual facility is more in that range, it's the other cost that bump it up to the...
You have the difference between soft cost, hard cost. Hard cost, you said, or the hard bricks and mortar, and then you have the soft cost, which represents all the fees, architect fees, construction management, said those two first, and then...
In the right order.
In the right order. Furniture, fixtures, things of that nature, things that we have to put in the building as well, so...
Continuity too, there's money, there's money set aside for the what-ifs, the unknowns, the when you, when you take down a wall, what's behind that wall that you couldn't see.
Exactly, just in case there's problems. So as I said, you have the base bid, then you have the alternate, okay? The base bid... Like I said, it includes all, pretty much the essentials of what we believe we need to do this high school and do for the next 30 or 40 years in a school that's gonna serve, you know, meet our needs. The, you know, the basics in terms of, you know, new science areas, new carpeting, we're gonna redo the auditorium, and gut the seats, and lighting, and all those things, sound system. So the base bid includes all those kinds of things, but what we're gonna go over is the add alternates. So we have another laundry list of 10 items that could cost more than that $32 million, and we'll go over that, so you understand what that is. So the first one, this is the biggest one, this, and we prioritize these, the board prioritize them, ranked them 1 to 10, and we got collectively, the administration and the board, we ranked what we thought we wanted in order. And number one was the high school annex, and it came in at about $3.5 million. What this would include is a facility that would be adjacent to the existing gym and near the student parking lot. It gives us a new maintenance facility, it gives us storage and garage for 12 maintenance vehicles that we typically have to keep outside in the weather and the elements and it start rusting out. So we'd like to keep those indoors. It gives us an additional pool deck space, about eight feet extra, if I'm not mistaken, Hank, in terms of getting us an extra pool deck. We go into that auxiliary gym area to get us more deck space, and go to a swimming, it's very, very crowded, very tight, and that's something that would be nice to have. Also gives us larger pool locker rooms, it gives us public restrooms in that vicinity as well. We would get a new fitness center, which would include the free weights and the ellipticals and treadmills, things of that nature. We would open that to the students, you know, during the school day, or athletes, and then we'd like to open it to the public as well in the evenings. The regulation gymnasium would be included in this. We have about seating, about three or four rows of seating in the plans that would accommodate about 100 spectators. So we could have a, maybe a junior high game, or a adjacent boys and girls game, a JV game in one gym, or a varsity in the other gym at the same time simultaneously. So there is a regulation gymnasium, we're seating for 100 spectators, but we also get out of this physical education and athletic storage, which is needed as well. So that is the biggest chunk of what we're gonna present here, and as I said, it's almost $3.5 million.
Just to be clear, with all these options, the number is the total soft and hard cost number, correct? That is an all-in number?
I'm gonna refer to Dan, Hank, I'm sorry, Dan.
That's a sticks and bricks number.
That's the number that we are looking to get on bid day.
On bid day. But that also, it won't cost us any more than that, correct? Soft cost or anything like that?
It shouldn't. If it extends the schedule, it will, it would impact our fee as well as Hank's fee, I would imagine.
My fee's all wrapped into it, so it doesn't affect...
Correct, because your fee's total private cost.
Right.
Okay. So how much are we adding to these numbers for total cost then? Can you give me just a rough percentage? Am I adding 7%, 10%?
It would be like maybe $40,000.
Oh, that's all?
That's a lot.
I thought, I thought Hank could be, are you 3% Hank, or 5%?
Well, no, mine's, mine, as you remember, when I offered to design all of these add alternates, had no additional fee, so...
Okay, thank you. So when you say yours is wrapped up in the cost, you're wrapped up in the base bid cost?
Mine's wrapped up in the base bid cost. Right now, your, your, your plan is to not increase the budget, so my fee is capped at that budget.
So for purposes of planning, it's this plus a very minimum amount? Okay, thank you.
The next item that would rank number two on a priority list is stadium restrooms. So if you've been to a football game, soccer game, or any of them, same, you know that restroom access is hard to come by at the top unless you use a portage on. So, you know, to eliminate people having to walk all the way down to the maintenance where the restrooms are, we looked at the possibility of adding stadium renovations. This would be located directly behind the press box. As I said, it would eliminate portages, provides easy public access, meets ADA requirements, any elderly that have issues, graduation, football games, makes it very accessible to them right behind the press box. That costs $273,000. That's the rest.
Scott, would that also help with the concession stands up to Hillfield?
There is no concession built into that, it is simply a boys' and girls' restroom at this point. I don't think that's gonna do anything for our concessions, correct?
No, what it, it's strictly restroom facilities, ADA-accessible restroom facilities to eliminate the portages.
Okay, any questions on that? Number three, new boilers. Now, we have three boilers in the basement that probably nobody's ever seen, but there are boilers down there that we need to heat and cool the building to replace these. We would, we're gonna do a separate cooling system, but to replace these, it would make it much more energy-efficient and, you know, we'd have a lot of savings in terms of the heating bills long-term with this, but the new boilers would cost $457,000. Any questions on the boilers?
We stole the two-pipe system.
This is a two-pipe system, not a four-pipe system. So in other words, the difference between two-pipe and four-pipe, two-pipe system means basically around October, November, you either switch over, there's a point where you gotta switch over to cold or heat, and cold is that point in that fall, and there's a point in the spring where you gotta make a decision, you're gonna roll over to air conditioning. So there's about a two-week discomfort time at the high school, whenever you're in that middle land, because you really can't make that decision until you know that the cold weather's behind you, or the warm weather's behind you, and then you have to make that switch. So that's the difference. But the four-pipe system was significantly more expensive, and the board decided not to pursue that option. Okay?
Hank, what is your recommendation on the new boilers?
My engineers have reviewed everything, and... That's why, that's why you're looking at this as an add alternate, because after their review, they, they say the boilers are in good shape and will last you at least another 20 years. And they did a cost analysis on the more energy-efficient boilers that they would be replaced with, and over a 20-year period, the price of replacing the boilers with more energy-efficient boilers is not made up with the energy savings that those boilers would create. So in, for instance, you would not save $457,000 in 20 years in utility costs. So their recommendation is to leave the boilers in place, and because they will last another 20 years, count on replacing them as a, as a capital project when they go back at some point.
All of those were replaced within the last five to 10 years, correct?
One of the boilers is, is about seven years old, the other two are, are solid cast-iron boilers that were replaced in the 96 renovation, but they're, they're 40-year boilers. They, they will last a very long time, they're not, they're about 15 years old now, they will last a long time.
Hank, I believe, Jim's not here to ask this question, I believe this was our maintenance supervisor's recommendation, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that he thought it would enable this two-week window that Scott's already talked about to run more efficiently.
That is, one of the benefits of the, of the condensing boilers would be that they, they can run at a, at a cooler temperature and allow that two-week period to, to run a little bit more comfortably than what it is now. The other benefit of them is they're more efficient, because they work that way. But like I said, the efficiency doesn't pay for itself.
I understand.
The comfort level would, in those, in those two weeks in the spring and the fall, it would, it would even out the highs and lows a little bit more, yes.
Another question. The 457, you said the efficiency wouldn't pay for that, is there any factors in for the maintenance cost over that space of time?
Yes, yeah, they looked at, they looked at a total operating cost.
So you, never you said efficiency, you mean what it costs to keep them up, run them, anything that, because we recently had a boiler problem, burn through of some sorts. We know it.
I'm not sure that was a boiler or a domestic water heater. It might have been a domestic water, I'm, I've heard it, I'm not familiar with the details of it, I believe it might have been a domestic water.
Yeah, I was at a touch point, so I don't know the details.
Yeah.
We good?
Yeah.
All right, number four is, we discussed this before, a few months back, new access road and sight lighting. This would cost 46, almost $47,000. What this is, is a gravel road that basically runs from that tennis court area back to Warrior Court. And the board, you know, we decided not to do this before, but that was under the premise that we were going to, you know, bring traffic in and out of that area with busing, and students, parents, anybody really could use that. And we thought about that, we, since then, have gotten some recommendations from our safety and security meetings that we've had, that we really need an emergency access out of this building. There's no way in and out of here unless you go out the 130 exit, so we thought it would be in our best interest to put an emergency access road there in the back, it would be gated, gated down by Warrior Court, and then we'd also have a second gate up near the tennis court, so nobody would be able to get in and out of there except an emergency, and maybe our maintenance staff would use that if they need to get some heavy equipment or different things in and out from the back. But it would not be a road that would be utilized on a daily basis for students, or parents, or any kind of traffic. So that alternate is $47,000. And as I said, it's, it is gravel, it's not a paved road. And the question's there.
Dan, how far is that? How much footage is that?
A road? I honestly do not know, sir.
I'm gonna estimate it's about 100 yards, that make sense Hank?
I'll tell you in a second. It is, yeah, 100 yards is about a good estimate.
What approximate grade?
It, it does have some grade issues, that's where some of the money is involved in, in making the grade a usable grade for emergency vehicles.
I was wondering why so much money for...
You're bucking a lot of existing grade that drops down pretty substantially, so...
You have to be around 6% or so.
Oh, okay. A finished 6%?
Right.
We do our yearly security checks two to three times a year. We do have, there's not too many items that are left that we still need to actually work. The access road is one of those items at the high school, because most of our items at the high school are complete, so it would be nice to start getting some of those items off the list, especially because we are required by the state to follow some survey, our recommendations.
New pool heater. The pool, the pool obviously needs to be heated, so, you know, we have a pool heater underneath, the same thing in the basement, that needs, you know, our maintenance staff has indicated that that, you know, we would need to consider that for a replacement, because it's getting near end of life, but, you know, I know you, Hank, your engineers looked at that as well, must, what...
My engineers looked at it and they see no, no immediate issues with that heater, it's a decently efficient heater, it has life left in it, they're, unlike the boilers, they're not saying 20-plus years of life, but it, but it has substantial life in it and is functioning well within all of its operating parameters now. So their suggestion is put, put a number in as an add alternate if money becomes available. It might be something you would consider doing, but it's not something that needs to be done right now.
The new one would obviously be more efficient, correct?
Slightly more efficient.
Number six, there's our tennis courts. If you've been to a tennis match, you know we have three tennis courts in the back, and to run a, a high school tennis match, to run it efficiently and in a timely fashion, you really should have five courts. So this alternate adds two tennis courts in the back, and it also adds 24 parking spaces to go with it. This cost is a little under $200,000, it's $194,000. As I said, you know, if you know anything about tennis, those kids are there very late because they are playing tennis, extends the time that they have to play the tennis match, because they're only able to use three courts at a time. So that add alter adds two more tennis courts. Any questions on tennis courts? Okay? Number seven, that's where we're at here, there's $150,000 add alternate for a library skylight. If you look right there, years ago, that was a skylight, it was enclosed because there was a number of leaks associated with that, but as a result of that, if you're here in the daytime, you know that, it's basically no different in the day than it is right now, it's very dark and dreary in this area, and certainly would be nice to have this brightened up, a library, I think this is gonna be the focal point of the high school, the centerpiece of what we have here. Be nice to have it, it is $150,000, but that's, you see, it came in at number seven.
The way we would address the leaks that the existing skylight had, the existing skylight was down at this level, and there's, there's a second story around us all the way here, where that's actually the courtyard of the science rooms upstairs. This, this proposal is to put the skylight on the roof of the second story, so that the water can shed off and get onto the lower level, instead of coming down into this well and then having to drain out and get trapped down in here. So this, so it would actually open the library up more, because it would create a two-story atrium space with a skylight at the top.
Number eight, replace existing light fixtures, that's all of these, everything that you see, you know, all the lighting fixtures that we have throughout the building. To replace them all, replace the ballast, you know, the ballast break, you know, routinely, and our maintenance has to go up and replace those, and obviously, there's a cost and time associated with that. The base bid does include replacing about 20% of the ballast, but, you know, can we live without that? It's significant, it's about $770,000, so the option is we replace 2, you know, 20% of them right now, and just have our maintenance staff continue to fix them as they break. And obviously, the alternate is to fix them all for that price.
And a little bit of history with that, that's replacing 20% of the fixtures that are scheduled to remain. We're replacing a good bit of the fixtures in the base bid to begin with. Any of the fixtures that were not done in your, in your energy conservation work and made energy-efficient, we are replacing. We're replacing things like the auditorium, and the gym, and the pool, all those lights are all being replaced in, in the base bid. These would be the remaining fixtures that in your energy project, you had retrofitted to be the current energy-efficient lights. Those are the ones that the ballast are starting to go bad on here and there, and that's with the 20%. We would include in the base bid 20% of the ballast of the remaining fixtures to be replaced.
Any questions?
It's my understanding there's some energy credits available to cut that cost, am I misunderstanding that?
Not for you, because they're already the energy-efficient fixtures. Not for you, because they're already the energy efficient fixtures. You already did that, yes. Every fixture would do the energy efficient fixtures to begin with. You already retrofitted those back in, Scott, you don't have to remember the timeframe in that, it was two thousand six, two thousand seven, something like that?
When we renovated last?
Not when we renovated last, you did, you came back in and had the lights retrofitted, changed from the, from the T-eight to the T-twelve fixtures.
Okay.
So that's already been done, so you, and you received grant money to do that.
Number nine, is a new roof upgrade. There is a base bid, we are going to replace the part of the roof that was not done about five or six years ago. Recall, we did about a million dollars worth of roof work about five years ago. There was a section of the building that was not done because that was done in our mid-nineties renovation, but that area in the base bid will be taken care of. And I'm not sure what the upgrade is, Hank, if you could talk about it, I don't know, but I know it's two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. What's the difference between the base bid and this?
The base bid is a ballasted rubber roof. The upgrade would go to a coal tar buildup roof system, like a Garland roof system, for instance, would be the upgrade charge. Both would have, both would carry the same warranty. The upgraded roof will last longer than the rubber roof will. They both carry the same warranty, though.
Is there any difference in the energy efficient rating and heat release?
Possibly, but not much. What happens is that there's probably some energy efficiency in the winter for keeping the heat in, but there's not really any energy efficiency in the summer for keeping the heat out. Because the coal tar roof heats up a lot more than the rubber roof does.
Last one, new stadium, I'm sorry, new baseball park and sight lighting. Down by the baseball field, basically behind our maintenance shed there, we would put a parking lot up on that, and, you know, when you're coming up the main road, coming through into the high school, on the left-hand side, we put parking there, which is on the other side of the guardrail, between the guardrail and the stadium. There's an area there, we can put some parking. I remember the number of spots that was off the top of my head, but it was somewhere in that one hundred neighborhood. Does that make sense? Or is that a little bit...
Let me see, I might be able to tell you in a second.
But that came out to three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and there would be some sight lighting that associated with that. The problem with that, that drives that number, is there's gonna be a lot of sight work that might need to be done, maybe some retaining walls, I'm not sure about walls, but...
Yeah. There's a wall, there's also a retaining potential tank that would have to be installed underneath the maintenance room.
The water retention's an issue as well.
It's the expense.
It appears to be more about sixty parking spaces.
That's the last one. If you put it all together, this is one through ten, what the costs associated with them are. In the total, for all the add alternates is just over six million dollars. Just over six million dollars for all of them. So as we said, whenever the bids come back in April, we're gonna see if there's any leftover money, and we'll make decisions as to which, if any, of these we will do.
This might be a question for Brett versus Scott in the presentation, but since we have, we do not know what the price is gonna be, how much money we're gonna have left over. Say we're close to getting our top goal, because as we put them in order, number one was the high school annex. How much more, we don't wanna extend, or we don't wanna increase the taxes to raise, to pay for the project. So instead of doing the seventeen and a half year loan, and we went out another year, how much more could we bar?
Each additional year we go out would yield approximately another million dollars for the project.
That figure was higher before, wasn't it, Brett?
I don't know that we ever really, I was estimating it before, and I think that's when the rates were lower.
Yes.
But, as you know, when the rates spiked back in May, those numbers all changed, so it's closer to a million dollars.
It was higher than before.
It was, I think it was closer to two million.
Brett, what's the first two we did, what's the staggering of the year commitments that we did? The first one was less than the second one, correct?
Correct. The first one was, I believe, ten, and the second one is seventeen.
Right. So if we take the third one, basically eighteen or eighteen and a half, we'll look at another half million, ten million dollars to help fund some of the stuff for another year.
Correct.
Remember, our last bond issue was twenty years. Now, it should be the standard plan con, didn't it? It was plan con. That's why everything was twenty years. Twenty years you could afford, and there's no increase in taxes anyway. The public accepted the term, but this board is getting off relatively easy because they're not doing any millage increases. The old board, that was on, we took all the grief for the nine millage increase that paid for what we had before, and now which we're enjoying right now.
I think that's what I was asking about extending the year, because we're not gonna increase mills, we'll just increase the payment by one more year.
So basically, you're saying you're looking, would be looking to increase the overall cost of this project from the thirty-two million dollars that we agreed to cap it at?
If we were close, based on the percentage in April.
What determines close?
We have to see what the amount is made from, that's why we're here, trying to prioritize and make our list and recommendations.
Another comment I think is worthy of making this time, for anybody, the board understands a lot of what has been discussed, you're seeing there'll be a lot more people in the room. There's a couple of terms that I think I'd be uncomfortable with, I was a spectator, extra money and leftover money. What we did here is, the board has pondered over this project for a lot of years, a lot of months at least, several years, and we all agreed that there's a lot more work to get done, and what we were willing to do at this time, just because of the financial constraints and potential tax increases. So whenever we're talking extra money and leftover money, what we're actually talking about, and anybody in the board can jump in if they disagree with me, is we pared off a whole lot of things that we all thought needed done. These are on the list, and there's other things. We took them off. The administration wanted them, everybody for different reasons wanted these other things, but we peeled them off one by one to get this down to what we consider manageable board agreement, figure we can work with. And now, now we say add alternates, the only reason, it's not extra or leftover money, it's the cap of what we agreed to spend, and we will spend up to that point but not to exceed. So I think this extra money and leftover money is, maybe might be raising some questions in other people's minds, maybe I'm wrong about that.
I think it's fair to say that, knowing that we still have one more, one decision to make, if we're in striking distance of things that we felt very passionate about the first time around, which I'm gonna be the first to tell you, and there's other few of us that felt very passionate about the gym being a part of this project, that I would like to discuss the fact of taking in an extra year to get that done, because it's not gonna get done. If it doesn't get done this time around, it's not gonna get done. And I think that's what the discussion is being led down the direction of. With the bonds and where they're at with regards to return, I think it's something we need to at least question, because it won't get done. Once this project's complete here at the high school, there's things that the other buildings are needing to be done, and you're not gonna come back and put a gym into this in the index.
Plus, I had Mr. Lego do a survey of all the quad A school districts in the county. There are six of them, including us, and neighboring ones, even Frank and Reginald's is Tripway, Gateway, of course, they're going down Tripway now, but they all have auxiliary gyms, and they're well-used. I have five grandchildren in Frank and Regal's school district. The auxiliary gym is loaded. It is just loaded. It's every activity possible, band, wrestling, football, basketball. It's well-received and well-occupied, and I'm talking, even in the summertime, it's used. It's just not just used during the nine months it's used all around. And also, I'll be honest with you, too, for years, maybe decades, and I've been here a few decades now, I've gotten my ears beat up about that swimming pool, the seating, and how bad it is. And I've done some homework on that, too. And you go around the whole county, and you look at their swimming facilities, you look at ours, and I deserve my ears getting beat. So these things that we're trying to get done now, and like I said, if you go twenty years, what we did before, that gymnasium, and I'll be honest with you, too, and I'll just say this, I said this to my board members last week, Mr. Bracco called me about two weeks ago, Mr. Bracco, you don't know, is in charge of our billing and grounds, and he called me, and I'm on a Bo-Tech board, and he called me, he says that he has five vehicles, he wants the auto body shop at Bo-Tech to become repaired because of scratches and bumps and also corrosion. And he says, I'd like to keep these things inside. Now underneath the auxiliary gym is a five garage door, eight bay vehicle, parking area, and also the, a big enough area also for his office space. And he says, he really needs that. He said, I got thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment sitting outside that are corroding. He says, other districts have heard they put them inside to save it, save the corrosion and also the wear and tear in the vehicle. So really, it's, everybody tells auxiliary gym, thinking, you know, putting athletics first. The foundation would be strictly for maintenance. So it's really a multi-purpose facility. It's not just for, like everybody jumped on the anti-athletic thing, it's not that all, but I'm telling you, the auxiliary gym is, we're behind the times.
I agree with Nick and what Scott has said. I think the high school annex, as you might call it, it impacts a lot of areas, not just the gym. The gym is one of the areas, the maintenance, the trucks, like Nick mentioned, the pool, as a lot of people know, we spent hours and hours and years and years at the high school swimming pool, and have been to many other pools, and right, our pool needs work. And I like to see that it all happen.
Where are we currently on our bond issue timeline? Like, I know we're gonna wait for the last issue for final numbers, but what are our current terms that have been issued? How many, what's the maturity period?
The longest maturity is seventeen and a half years.
Okay.
We have a decreasing debt slope after year twelve.
Twelve, right, okay.
Yes.
If we'd increased that to twenty years, Brett, what's that give us, two and a half or three million dollars possibly?
It'd give us, off the top of my head, it'd give us close to three million dollars, yes.
And our last bond issue was twenty.
And if we get to, if we get five percent, you know, if you get, you know...
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate, though, and the thing you gotta remember is, we're only fixing one building here. Again, that's been the main crux of the whole problem. The last time they did the renovation in ninety-six, they did every single building in the district. We just don't have the money to do that now. So by extending it out, it doesn't seem like much to, you know, us now, but you're handcuffing future boards, because then they gotta wait so many more years unless they're gonna go to the public for tax increases, and we know that's not gonna go over well. So I'm just keeping, I'm not saying on four against it, I need more information before I can make a decision. That's the bad thing about pushing, kicking the can further down the road to fix something now.
No, honestly, too, Phil, again, it's no, nobody's falling around to sit down on this table. By the way, this is a word I wanna say to publicly, real good people, no axe to the grind, bunch of good people, just like our previous board was twenty years ago, same type of people, cared about the kids first. But to come back to what you're saying, if we had Plan Con now, this there'd be no, this would be so, and maybe Plan Con will come back, I don't know.
Do we have any word on Plan Con?
It's still the same to my knowledge.
No words, just the last I gave you an update on it. As far as your project goes with Plan Con, you're in the pipeline, where you have Plan Con's Part A and B approved?
We have, we've almost finalized the Part D and E submittals. The last piece that's really left to be done before we can send them to the state is the financing piece, that we have to get some information from your bond counsel. Once that's filled in, we can send those off and submit them. And then we're working on the, the other piece that we have to do is the twenty-year variance. We should, we're filming, one of the things we have to do is film all the spaces of the building. We're doing that this week during the evening, so we'll be ready to go here before the end of January to submit everything.
When you say twenty-year variance, because as Nick had mentioned earlier, I thought one of the criteria is for Plan Con is that it was at a twenty-year financing plan. How does it work when we did the first one, would you say red at twelve, and the next one's at seventeen?
Yes.
They don't meet the twenty-year requirement?
No. What the twenty-year rule means is that you aren't eligible for reimbursement on a bond issue for a building for twenty years.
Right, right. And you're planning, it goes from the time you're opening bids, and your, the current schedule is about six months shy of that twenty years. Your opening bid's nineteen years, six months, approximately. So you have to apply for the variance to...
But then if you wanted renovations on your whole building that's coming up, then you gotta apply for another bond issue.
Put you on the edge of the corner here.
Pardon me?
All your other buildings are, by the time we do any of your buildings, they get renovated at the same time, so by the time you do any of your buildings...
Twenty years from the last time you did them, Scott, so they're still eligible.
Yeah.
If it's less than twenty years and back on one, they don't want you.
The other question I had, too, while we're talking about that, it's just hypothetically, for this project, the tide changes and we get some Plan Con money. Is there a chance that, well, not chance, how does that money have to be spent? Does it have to be spent against the debt for this project, or could you use that money for the next project, so to speak? Do they care where the money goes to?
Brett, you wanna chime in on this? They do care, somewhat.
The money will already have been paid. The money goes into the general fund. So at that point, whatever money that they send you, basically, you can use it for whatever you want.
So they have a criteria, you gotta pay down the debt with that, then?
And it's not a lump sum either, they spread it out over twenty years. They reimburse you over a twenty-year period.
Okay. Just goes into general fund, but...
It'll help you make that.
Right, it's gonna help you make a payment, one way or the other.
Right, because they send it to you upon, when you make your debt service payment...
Yes.
They then send you a reimbursement of, you know, thirty percent, whatever it is.
I understand.
The door construction, Brett, they have, they send crews of people down here inspecting what we're doing, making sure we're doing according to their specs that we applied for. You just can't, we'll say, if you want to add the science or some kind of activity, I'd rather be in the plans.
What Plan Con does is they review all your paperwork, they review our drawings, our submittals, and they approve those, and then they continue, as the project goes forward, you submit information on accounting and the final, they review all that. I think, Nick, the thing you're thinking about is, before, the people that came down to inspect the construction was labor and industry. They came down all from the state to inspect the construction. Now that, now that happens locally, so your local... But they still get back to the state, don't they?
Yeah.
The state says, I'm gonna give thirty percent, I'm sending people down there.
To just make sure you're not falling in those specifications.
The way the state makes sure you follow all that is by reviewing all...
That's right, exactly. As construction is being done, that's correct. Thank you.
I have two things, Hank. First of all, I'm sure there's a lot of people in this group that don't even know what Plan Con is. Can you just give like maybe one or two sentences on it?
Plan Con is a state-funded organization that was made to help districts with renovation projects or new construction projects. And it's based on need, so there's an aid ratio attached to it. Penn Trafford gets more money than Fox Chapel does, less money than McKeesport does, in the grand scheme of things. That's basically what it is. It's a taxpayer-funded reimbursement to maintain your buildings or build new buildings from the state level.
And I believe, as of a couple of years ago, that funding was in the red, is that correct?
It was in the red, yes.
But it's now in the black?
Correct. I'm being told as of January first, they're back in the black.
But they just, they have not yet released funds, they have...
Right. And they're continuing to level fund the Plan Con system, and they put a moratorium on new Plan Con projects. That's why you instructed me to put the Plan Con A and B in prior to that moratorium, so that when the project, because we did that well over a year ago, while we were still talking about this project, and that was planning ahead to make sure that you were in line and eligible for the reimbursement when it came up.
Thank you.
It's just so public, you know, is that our last renovation, Plan Con paid thirty percent of it, so we...
That's about where you're aiming.
Yeah, I raised, you've raised a twenty-five million dollar project, thirty percent, that are eight thousand, eight million dollars, so we're about a thirty-three, thirty-four million dollar area. So that's what the project can add.
And we're in the pipeline for potential funding, do you know where we stand in the number, a hundred and something, in order, a hundred and sixty?
That number, somebody from the district got that number from the state, and what that is, is that's just where you are, but as you continue through the process, your number shuffles. Right now, you're with that number because you have Plan Con A and B submitted. If, once you get, once you get through D and E and F, if you can, you could piggyback over other projects in the pipeline that might still be at the A and B level. So the number will change a little bit as you go forward, one way or the other.
Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone else have any questions about the information Scott shared tonight? Or Brett's financial? We will be working on this over the next few months. We will have a plan in place by April, so we can actually start. So hopefully, when the money comes in, we can see how much the bids come in at, and we might be having a different problem. So hopefully, we have a positive problem to have, but we will work it out. And here's all I have for information, Mr. Scott.
All right, thank you. We'll do recognition of visitors at this time. Have a few things I have to say first before you can speak. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Okay, I have a list of residents who wish to address the board. Your name will be called in order in which you signed up. The first one, Laura McDonough. Come on over.
I'm Laura McDonough, and the first thing I wanna say is I've decided, who's a freshman in college, in tenth grade or in the fifth grade here, and I'm so glad that I live here and have the teachers and the principals. I couldn't say anything. I love it being here, and I came from Penn Hills. My husband and I were just so grateful to be here and be with wonderful people. One thing that I looked at, probably most important for my family and some people here know, is not sports and not school, but my kids love sports and have played sports since third grade basketball here. And having a fifth grader, I'm gonna be here a long time. I was very involved in the, excuse me, basketball boosters. And one thing that we saw was, the secretary was gym time. My son is in a championship Saturday. We had no practices once games started. We had, our playoffs were supposed to be three games, it went to one. And I just think for anything, I look at the pool, you go in there for swim lessons, it's like, I'm like, how do they even have a meet here? So that's very important to me, because I think that brings the kids together, families together, that's how you meet people. It was just something that I've lived here almost twenty years, and it was the same problem when my son was in third grade, who's now a freshman in college. That, that seems to just be a little bit lacking when you go to Connelsville, who has two gyms, or Franklin, or different areas. So that was important to me, and the extra gym would be great, and even the fitness center, because my kids all belong to the gym down the road, that to come to the school and be here, that that's just something that's been important to my family, so, and basketball and all... Thank you.
Okay, next, Sally.
Yes, I'm Sally Redding, eight point seven, State Route one thirty tracker. And now addressing you, I'm hoping to have the attention of other people, and you'll know why. First of all, I'd like to commend Dr. Harris, school board members, and Mr. Reimier for the good showing that we did on the statewide grading system. It wasn't just a one-person deal, it was a whole bunch of people. So thank the teachers, Mr. Reimier...
You're welcome.
...and the rest of you. And secondly, as I was walking in, this is, I didn't plan to say this, I noticed that the Coffee for a Cause, this month, I hope we don't miss too many days of school because of that, goes to Face in Action, and, which a lot of you have helped to contribute to in buying tickets, and just as a reason why we're always trying to raise money, so we can volunteer. United Way expects us to pay a good bit of money for the program. I don't have the exact figure yet this year, but it's going to be in the ballpark of forty thousand dollars. So I definitely, I mean, that's how we can help people. So I definitely wanna thank the Coffee for a Cause, and thanks for the good standing on the statewide grading. That's it.
Thanks, Sally. Dave Babic.
I'd first like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I, I don't think I've ever spoken before in which I've kept it under five minutes, so... So I wrote this out, hoping that I could rush through this and get, get done. And also, when I wrote this, I wasn't sure that, of the atmosphere, and so it seems that we have a lot of sympathetic ears here, and, but I just wanna reiterate how passionate I am about our pool and our swimming program. So here goes. My name is Dave Babic, I'm a resident of Penn Township, and also a biology teacher at our high school. My three sons are, or have been students and swimmers in the district. I've lived and worked here for over twenty years, and I've coached swimming and track for all of that time. I've also helped coach soccer here. And I've always tried to serve the people of our community the best that I could in my time here at Penn Trafford. I'm here today to continue my service by giving our board the information they need to make good decisions during the upcoming renovations. I know some of you, and I believe that all of the board members truly want what's best for our children and our community. I don't doubt that at all. I'm just hoping to help inform your decision on how to best serve our district. I could not with a good conscience fail to address the board on the need to improve our pool. I owe it not only to the kids of today and of the future, but also to the students and parents of the past, who always had hoped for, but never got a chance to see a better pool. I plan to finish my career here, and I don't wanna stand on the deck of that pool regretting not saying anything when I had the chance. I've been so impressed, and I've been so grateful, that I and other teachers and staff have been given the opportunity to give input to the architect. I applaud those that have made that decision. As I've told Hank, and I've told our principal, Scott, even if we can't have everything we want, allowing us to be a part of this decision-making process has really meant a lot to me, and I've really enjoyed working with the architect and Scott in, at least, and having them listen. In looking at the renovation plans, I'm very pleased to see the commitment to update and improve many areas of our school. I think that the construction will significantly impact our students and be a source of pride for our community. As the department chair, I am particularly excited to see our new science rooms and labs. However, we have a chance with this renovation project to do more, to positively affect our students and our community. What is being presented as a possible alternate plan would significantly improve the swimming pool, in addition to providing our students and community with other areas to use for recreation and wellness. Our swimming pool has not been significantly improved or refurbished since the original construction. In that time, new facilities have been added and others have been improved. This has gradually led to the pool becoming a source of embarrassment for our students, staff, and community. It saddens me to see my swim team members travel to other swimming pools of comparable districts and see what their students get to utilize. Although we do enjoy a home pool advantage, it's disheartening to hear opposing teams and their parents call our pool a dump. Bell Vernon, Dairy, and Mount Pleasant all have superior facilities. Some of the top teams in the WPIAL have even refused to compete against Penn Trafford because they believe our pool is unsafe. I'm so proud of the accomplishments of our swimmers and divers throughout the years, and I feel they deserve better. In addition to our high school swim team and the high school phys ed classes, many other people use this swimming pool. The Penn Trafford Aqua Club typically includes over a hundred and ten swimmers each year. They compete in the Chestnut Ridge Swim League comprised of other school districts of similar size. When we host meets, there may be hundreds of swimmers and their families who impression, whose impression of our district is based solely on their visit to this part of our school. PTARC reports five hundred and fifty-five children are involved in the Learn to Swim program each year. They also host open swims at various times throughout the year. This is the only pool in our district that kids can come to learn to swim, the only pool that the public can come to swim for fitness, the only pool that we have to use for lifeguard training, EMS rescue training, and scuba training. It's a place where good things are happening and good memories are made. If we can't provide a pool that our community can be proud of, shouldn't we at least provide one that we can be satisfied with? If we fail to act now, future students could conceivably be swimming in a facility that has not been significantly improved in a hundred years, if it doesn't fall apart first. The walls in our locker rooms are caving in. Tall kids cannot stand up all the way in the boys' shower room. The ventilation is so poor that many days my swimmers run into the hallway to try to breathe. Kids cut their feet on cracked tiles during meets, and there's not enough room for the competing teams, either on the deck or in the locker rooms. We need a new pool, but I understand that that's not likely. The existing plans do address some of these issues, but the alternate plan gives us the space we so desperately need. Please consider funding a plan that would address these issues, and also allow our programs to grow instead of regress. Almost, I'm almost done. Our chance is now. It's the last chance I have to see, if not a new pool, at least a better one. The reason that we have the buildings and facilities that we have today is because passports have had the courage to fund projects that would benefit the students of the future. I've always seen myself as part of a team that is the Penn Trafford School District. We each have our roles to play. If we work together, we can achieve great things. I believe our board is also committed to doing their best to serve the people of our district, and I hope that my talk here tonight helps provide insight into the state of our swimming facilities. And I'd be happy to make myself available to provide more information if needed. And again, I would like to sincerely thank you all for all you do for our district, and especially for listening to and considering my position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Marty Grabowski.
Hello, guys. Marty, thank you, Phil, let me speak. I'm Marty Grabowski, I'm the assistant director of the PTBA, the Penn Trafford Basketball Association. My address, three twenty-three Rob Road here in Harrison City. I've been involved with the program for five years. My oldest is twelve. I have a nine-year-old and a five-year-old. He's been involved, I've been involved with the board now for three years. And as we stated, we did lose gym time this year. School activities are taking more of the gym time. We service the kids anywhere from third grade to twelfth grade, we expanded it, to twelfth grades. We have almost six hundred kids playing in our league. The extra gym time would extend our season, keeping our class down, keeping the season going longer. And I was ashamed to say that we had to move gym time around to allow other kids to play, because we had to split our season between the younger kids and the older kids. But the extra gym time would be a definite benefit to us. And I wanna thank you all, because we could not have our organization without you allowing us to use all the gyms that we do. We do use pretty much every single minute of the gym time that is given to us by the schools. So that's just, I mean, it would definitely be a benefit to keep our program going. Every year we've seen, in the last two or three years, we have seen our growth expand, especially with us adding to the twelfth grade, the boys and girls. So I thank you for the time, and please consideration for the, the kids in the community to continue to play basketball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Janet Didia.
I'm Janet Didia, I live at the twenty Thomas Jefferson Court. My family and I have been supporting boys' basketball team for many years. My son's been on the team since third grade here, and there's always been an issue with gym time. Even in junior high school, whenever the ninth-grade boys can't have gym time here, because they have to be bussed down there, so those junior high boys have to practice at five to seven. And then we have the boys and girls varsity and JV teams that they have to share three to five, and five to seven, and then you have to go home, if you go five to seven practice, and try to get any kind of homework you can done, which don't usually get much done, and that's a small timeframe. But also, during the, the summer, we have open gyms at Penn Middle, and I don't know if you've ever been in a game at Penn Middle before, but gym there is so narrow, and if your son or daughter wants to shoot a three-point shot, they can barely stand there at the edge without practically hitting the bleachers to get their shot off, and it's not very beneficial to helping the team do better during the season, when they can't have an ample gym space available to them during, you know, open gym time. Also, I know my daughter, who graduated a couple of years ago from here, she was in indoor percussion, and they also need gym time, you know, for their practicing in the winter guard, and they're always struggling trying to find gym space. They have to move their equipment, drums, large marimbas on wheels, to churches and Harrison Park for their practices, because they can't get gym space either. So a second gym would be so beneficial to the school district, and we'd be able to have doubleheader games, girls' and boys' basketball games, same time playing, like all the other school districts have, and bring in a lot of people to come here and money to help our, you know, teams. So I hope you really consider that for our school, to have that extra gym, and thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet Didia. Anybody else? Okay. And that includes the visitor recognition. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report?
Second.
Tagged by Dallas, second by Scott.
Okay, we've had a measure to report, to approve the treasurer's report for November and December two thousand thirteen, and the high school extracurricular fund report for October and November two thousand thirteen. And, okay. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of January?
Motion. Motion made by Phil. Second. Second by Scott. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay. Any old business?
We are not receiving.
Okay. Executive session, we do not have a need to break for an executive decision, session, rather. New business, Dr. Koschko, athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept the following resignations. Megan Collins, color guard instructor effective beginning of two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. James Miller, assistant percussion instructor, instructor effective beginning two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. And Vincent Giavannetti, junior high assistant baseball coach, effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moves to employ the following athletic and extracurricular personnel. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act thirty-four one fifty-one, point fourteen waivers from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Christina Nowak, color guard instructor effective beginning of two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. Jason Goita, assistant percussion instructor effective two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. Sean McCartney, varsity boys volleyball assistant coach. Spring musical, as listed below.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all the necessary documentation and acceptance of Act thirty-four one fifty-one and one fourteen waivers from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Colin Austin, volunteer varsity wrestling coach. Pat Lynn, volunteer high school basketball coach.
Second.
Question.
Second by Mr., or Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
It'll be all, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasek.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to schedule. Tri-State Video Services, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. Second by Mr. Mill.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
So that is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasek. Fillings and grounds and safety, Mr. Leonard.
I have nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Mr. Nemec.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Food service, Dr. Trey. Anybody take a, okay?
There's nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay, thank you. Personnel curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers, support personnel for the month of January 2014.
Second. Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave request and teacher substitutes, as listed.
Motion.
Second by Phil.
Question.
Okay, question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move through the following student-teacher assignments. St. Vincent College cooperating professional is Chad Wasso. Student-teacher is Nicole Delavanco. And the dates are January 13th this year to, I guess it's February, I don't know if I'm sorry, April, the, no, May, May 2nd of this year. And Kelly Potkle is the cross-selling teacher. Rita Klein is the student-teacher, January 13th to May 2nd of this year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Move to employ the following temporary professional employees effective January 14th, 2014, to teach in the area of heard respective certification and assigned by the administration. Employment is contingent upon the receipt of all signed contract, delay in Friday, January 17th, 2014, and seventh receipt of all necessary certification documentation, excepts Act 34-151, 114, for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Stephanie Martini, Level B1, salary is $42,300.
Second by Mr. Koschko.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I just want to make an introduction. Stephanie is in the audience tonight. Stephanie, you want to come up? Can I have your word? Congratulations. We have very high remarks from her. Maybe Bill is under some of the praise at Penn Middle?
She's an excellent teacher. I'm sorry that she was long-term subbing for maternity leave, and when young teachers come in and do an excellent job like Stephanie did, other administrators, Mr. Glaze, sweeped them up to their high, their building for full-time positions. But we are one big family here at Penn Trafford, and as long as she's in the family, I'm happy.
Well said.
Thank you very much.
This is your first day of the next 35 years, so.
Congratulations.
Hope you're just as happy then as you are now. Congratulations, thank you.
Okay.
Is that approved?
Yeah.
Move to approve the following makeup days designated for 2013-14 school year. School closed due to weather, Tuesday, January 7th. Makeup day was Monday, January 20th, act any day. School closed due to bus problem, Wednesday, January 8th. Makeup day, February 17th. And act any day, Monday, January 20th. Makeup day was Wednesday, January 8th.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Public slash policies as public relations slash legislative slash Title II, that's an awful, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of motions this evening. First, move to approve the following revised policies and administrative regulations as presented to the board. Copy of these policies and regulations will be made official part of the minutes, as listed.
Second. Question by Mr. Petrusi.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to tentatively approve the following policies as presented to the board, and they are listed below.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasek.
Question.
Question being called, being called for, this will be a roll call vote.